Pleasure to speak to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item tonight will be public comment. We do have one. If you could come up, state your name, address, and we ask that you keep your comments to five minutes.
Okay. So I can stand on the X? Yeah, my name is Greg Wilson. I live at 10525 Harvest Road in St. George, Kansas, just over, it's a little suburb just the other side of Manhattan. And I'm coming today on behalf of the National Waste and Recycling Association. We've been trying, oh, really since last September to come up with some sort of resolution. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, first and foremost. It's definitely a strange and unprecedented time in our nation with all the different viruses and everything. And we would, I would just basically like to address the proposed franchise fee on our industry for wear and tear on the streets. As I said, we've been trying to come to some sort of resolution to this issue for over nine months. We sent a letter back in September of last year stating our concern and desire to come up with a different solution. Through email correspondence here in the last couple of months, the original ordinance of a 5% license fee on grocery receipts has been determined to be illegal both by both our attorneys and the city attorney. And this license fee has resulted in us paying a tremendous amount of money to the city, which we would like to have refunded right away. Second, to a single, to single out one industry to pay for the fee is not right. The waste and recycling industry trucks are not the only commercial vehicles on the city streets. The alcohol and beverage delivery trucks, the food trucks, and other delivery vehicles are on these city streets as well. In addition, there are other taxes from all types of vehicles earmarked specifically for road construction and maintenance. Again, to single out one industry is not right, fair, or equitable. Thirdly, if the city wishes to impose a fee on all commercial vehicles, which is kind of what the addition, the, or I guess the latest proposal, or the latest proposal we've talked about, we'll put it that way, was they were going to add $4,800 fee per vehicle. And it is our interpretation of the law that the fee should be consistent with the amount of work required to regulate the industry. I do not believe the cost, the city cost for enforcement of this fee would justify collecting over $100,000 for one company for their fleet. Our position remains the same. The arbitrary assessment of this fee is not right, in fact, illegal, and directly impacts our ability to conduct business in Junction City. It is, it is the citizens of Junction City that will end up paying the price for this unjust facts. Please refund the money, and let's move forward and find a legal and fair solution to the problem. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next item is consent agenda. Any questions for staff regarding that?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, special presentations. Get up for this one since Mary's here. Consciously wore my orange just now. That's the only orange I have.
Am I supposed to be able to hear you?
Yeah, you can come on up.
Okay, all right.
This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Junction City to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on an average there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. Whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. Whereas Kansas has 386 gun deaths every year with a rate of 13.3 deaths per 100,000 people, Kansas has the 22nd highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas gun homicides predominantly occur in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including in Junction City, are working to end senseless violence with evidence-based solutions, and whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support, the, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas the pandemic facing America has drastically impacted communities and individuals sheltering in place, which may result in situations where access to firearms results in increased risk in intimate partner violence, gun deaths, suicide by gun, and unintentional shootings. Whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in the presidential inauguration parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 23rd birthday. And whereas to help honor Hadiya and the more than 100 Americans whose lives are cut short every day, and whereas, and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 5, 2020, the first Friday in June, as the sixth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join in this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 5, the first Friday in June 2020, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 5, 2020, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now there before resolved that Mayor Jeff Underhill, the city of Junction City, Kansas, declares the first Friday in June, June 5, 2020, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic events, effects of gun violence and honor and value all human lives. Would you like to say something?
Oh, boy. Okay, only five minutes, right? Oh, wow. I am, I am so humbled. You guys have really, this city has really had me this week on a roller coaster with so much going on, bringing back so many terrible memories. But I want to thank the city, Mayor Underhill, commissioners, the police department. Oh, wow. We have so much to do in our town, and there are still senseless acts of violence going on. And I am still on that mission to try to reduce numbers, and I will continue to do that, most definitely in honor of our son Felix Snipes. And I say his name again, Felix Snipes, and to all individuals that have left too soon due to any senseless acts of violence. And I thank you guys.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Next item on our agenda this evening, financial presentation by Jeff White of Columbia Capital.
Mayor Commissioners, I do have Jeff White with Columbia Capital on the phone with me today. He's going to do a representation and kind of go over our financial plan and progress and keep it organized. Jeff, are you there? Can you hear us?
I can hear you fine, Lindsay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, my name's Jeff White with Columbia Capital. Thanks for allowing me to join virtually tonight. Columbia Capital is an independent financial advisory firm, and it's our honor to have served as the city's financial advisor since 2011. I do, as Lindsay noted, have two jobs tonight. One is to provide a quick update on the progress of the city over the last decade or so with respect to its debt portfolio. And secondly, to describe a series of bond refinancings we recommend the city consider to generate debt service savings by replacing higher-cost debt with lower-cost debt. I'm going to start with a presentation on page 51 of your packet. This is the one with the black background, and I think Jim has it on the screen. I will move fairly quickly through this, as a few of you saw last year's version of this, but I know that we have new commission members, and I'm certainly happy for any of you to stop me along the way with any questions. With that, Jim, I'm going to start on page 55 of the packet, CCM introductions, the slide title. Just, just by way of history, as I mentioned a second ago, Columbia Capital began working with the city nearly a decade ago. It's kind of hard to believe. One of the first things that we did was work closely with city, with the city commission and city staff on a fiscal transformation plan. And these were fairly dark days for the city, at least as it, as it came to its financial condition, its debt condition. And one of the immediate things that we had to do was to petition the state legislature to actually modify state law to allow the city to exceed the statutory debt limit, which applies to all of the 625 cities in Kansas. We were successful in, in getting that done and getting the governor to sign it. I will tell you a quick little story that we were in the Capitol building for the signing of that legislation, and the governor sat down, put his pen to the bill, looked up at me and said, "Don't screw this up." And I can tell you that, kind of coming to the punchline here, the city has not screwed this up at all. In fact, this is really a terrific story. Columbia Capital formed in 1996. As I mentioned, we're an independent firm. We serve as a fiduciary to the city, which means that we provide advice in such a way that we are obligated by law to put the city's interests ahead of anyone else's, including our own. So let's jump in the wayback machine. And Jim, I'm going to go a couple slides ahead to here to the first slide that says history, cash, and investments. So let's go all the way back to 2005. So in 2005, this, this slide indicates what the year-end cash and investment totals for the city were at that point. 2005, 2006, pretty healthy. 2007, pretty significant drawdown. And by, you know, 2009, my understanding is when the city manager and finance director at that point came into the organization, they were about a payroll away from, from running through all of the cash that the city had on hand. So pretty desperate times. On the next slide, you can see at the same time, the city went from having a pretty modest level of debt, 2005, 2006, 2007, to nearly quadrupling its debt between 2007 and 2009. And of course, that was in large part related to the response to bringing the big red one back from Europe and building out residential subdivisions along with a number of other economic development programs. On the next slide, we can see that the city actually historically did not have a credit rating, and that actually is not terribly common for smaller Kansas communities that don't issue debt very often. Excuse me, but as much debt as the city issued between 2007 and 2009, it did need to get a bond rating and achieved a bond rating of A-, which is the seventh highest rating available. So the next slide, which shows principal interest payments versus, versus the budget, gives you a sense of how much stress the additional debt was putting on the city budget. So in 2005, debt service comprised about 17% of the city's total general fund spending. And by 2009, that had grown to, you know, just shy of 40%. So in the span of a very short four or five years, the, the city's general fund resources were quickly gobbled up by increasing debt payments. In Kansas, on the next slide, as I mentioned, cities have a statutory limit on the amount of debt that they can borrow. And what this bar chart shows is the amount of debt the city could have issued in each of these years without running a file of that statutory limit. So you can see in 2005, the city could have issued roughly about $19 million in general obligation debt if it wanted to at that point without running a file of statutory limits. In 2009, we would have had negative capacity under, under the statutory debt limit were it not for the statutory change that we were successfully getting. And even with that statutory change, you can see that by 2011, the city effectively had no general obligation borrowing capacity. That really, as, as you can imagine, put the city in a very difficult spot and really exposed it to a situation where a natural disaster or some sort of other emergency would have arisen, and the city would not have had authority to do general, general obligation borrowing. So on the next page, I, I mentioned that the top one of our first duties in our work for the city was to come up with a fiscal transformation plan. And you can see here in this list, some pretty sobering actions that we asked the city commission to take, a property tax increase, sales tax increase, as well as a number of other things. And I will tell you that, and a couple of you were there, as challenging as this was to do, the, the commission took the actions that they needed to do. This, the staff in the background was working very hard to balance expenditures with revenues available. And I think the city did an excellent job in communicating with the public, because even though, you know, nobody likes tax increases, I think everyone knew and understood that drastic actions were necessary. Okay, so that takes us through kind of the dark days. So let's talk about where we sit today. And it's really kind of the same set of slides over the last four years. And so you can see we've gone from 2009, where we had less than $100,000 in cash and investments available to us, to ending 2019 with more than $27 million in cash and investments, which is, this really is stunning feat by the commission and by staff to, to, to put that much away, provide for the liquidity of the city and those kinds of things. At the same time, on the next slide, you can see that the amount of debt outstanding has been slowly marching back onto more reasonable levels. So we ended 2019 with just under $80 million in debt outstanding, which is a $25, $26 million reduction over, over four years, which is pretty terrific. I mentioned on the next slide that in 2009, the city's bond rating was A-, the seventh highest available over the last decade. And really over the last five or six years, we've seen that bond rating increase by two notches. So we now have the fifth highest rating available at an A+ stable. And then that next slide shows that we've also made progress in reducing the amount of your general fund budget that, that is consumed by debt service each year. It's still quite high. 2019, the estimate is that about $1 out of every $2 in expenditures went to cover debt service costs, which is, which is still pretty staggering. This really probably should be around 15%, not more than 15%, but making progress there as well. Next slide shows what the debt margin is today. So our special legislation that prevented us to have more debt injunction than any other city in the state could have, has expired. And you can see that even though that's expired, our borrowing capacity is back up into the kind of low $20 million range. Not that you would expect to borrow that much money, but certainly, knowing that if a tornado came through town, or something along those lines, you would have the ability to do a borrowing if you needed it to provide Alan and Lindsay with a little better sleep at night. So what's next for us? Well, the good news is tonight is that we are proposing that the city look at refinancing five series of bonds outstanding to exchange higher-cost that's existing debt with lower-cost new debt. And across those five series, based upon markets today, we would expect total savings to be north of $3 million in, in $2020. So pretty significant amount of additional savings. And again, each year, we take a look at the city's outstanding debt and identify opportunities to replace higher-cost outstanding debt with lower-cost new debt. So this would take, this would take us from a five series of bonds to two series of bonds. We would be refunding at same footprint, which means we're not extending maturity. The, the new bonds would mature over the same period as the, as the old bonds did. How about with respect to rate exchanges? We, we definitely think that the city is trending toward an upgrade rather than downgrade, of course. And being into that double A category is our next step would be terrific. Debt profile, it does have a significant amount of debt that remains outstanding, but that's coming down fairly quickly over the next 10 years. And you can see that actually on the next slide where the, the amount of principal being repaid each year really accelerates. So 93% of the city's G O debt will be repaid in 10 years, which is, which is terrific. And you can see that the debt service burden in absolute dollars starts to drop pretty significantly in about five years. So I hate to tell you that, that the belt-tacking is likely necessary for, for another few years, but we're getting close to the point where the city could think actively about using its borrowing capacity again for CapEx in the future if it, if it wanted to. So to quickly wrap up my part of the presentation here, this is just such an excellent reminder of the astounding fiscal turnaround the city's made in just about a decade. It really shows what everyone can do, working together through very, very challenging times to get to a point where the city's one of the most stable cities in the, in the, in the state. You've got to keep your foot on the gas, though, and that's really the last bullet point here, that you're not out of the woods. The, you know, the, the burden of that debt remains pretty heavy for the next four or five budget years, and you'll continue to, to need to maintain that lean organization in the coming years. So the, the bonds that we propose, the city refinance, are listed on page 99 of your packet. That's the summary of those bonds that, that are currently outstanding that we propose to refund. The action before you tonight is to allow staff, bond council, and us to work together to take these refinancings into the market. Our plan is to provide, the third week in July, and close that in August. As I mentioned, based upon current markets, we expect that refinancing these could produce savings north of $3 million, which, which would be excellent. I do want to offer one note of caution, kind of as a, as a last comment here, that although the municipal market has seen quite a bit of improvement following a very rough patch in the heat of the crisis in March of April, we're still very much subject to additional kind of market shocks, a second wave of the virus or something like that, which could cause rates to back up. So we'll keep you apprised if anything changes. But right now, we're excited to take these transactions into the market next month and have our fingers crossed for an excellent result. With that, Mr. Mayor, happy to try and answer any questions about, of you or your colleagues.
Does the delay in our rating change have any effect on the interest rates or the, the refinance?
That, just, just in case you couldn't hear that, Mayor was asking if the delay in the rate change has any effect on the interest rates.
So if we're, you know, we are, we, we have been lobbying for an increase in the, in the city's bond rating. Lindsay, was that the question?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so we've been lobbying for an upgrade in the, in the city's credit rating. We'll have another shot at them here over the next few weeks as, as we bring these, these transactions to market. I'm hopeful. I, I will tell you, it's a bit of a challenging time to, to be talking to rating agencies about upgrades, but it's not impossible. And, you know, everything that they've asked the city to do to increase the rating, i.e. reducing your debt outstanding, increasing your, your liquidity, the city's done all those things. So we continue to have our fingers crossed. And if we did get a, a rating increase, that could conceivably increase the amount of savings.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Jeff, you're hearing, but of course what happens is when we get a savings like this, this allows us less money we spend on debt service or property taxes. Principal does not go away, which it would, but it doesn't go away. But if we can save $300,000, the financing that Jeff led us through back in 2016 gave us approximately $550,000 per year, $5.5 million over the remaining 10 years, gave us savings. When I, in the first budget I did here, when I came here, 49%, 50% of our property taxes that we assessed to the people went to debt service. Down to about 33%, 34%. If we can save in there $300,000, we'll push it down lower. At the same time, we can keep our middle level the same and expand programs. We do one replacement equipment that's been, been delayed, but also continue our efforts to improve streets and everything else. Plus, it also gives us some cush to get through times like we're doing right now. So it's that whole package together that's been real important. But the refinancing is, is an important thing here because, one, we can do it. I think a lot, and maybe Jeff could talk about this a little bit, a lot of people think, "Well, the interest rate's been down. Why don't we refinance?" Well, we can do a 20-year bonds. There's periods in there, and Jeff, could you explain this better, that are callable, where you could refinance. You just can't do it anytime you want, like I can on a house.
Jeff, just to be clear, Alan was asking if you could explain why we can't just refinance in any time, that we have to wait for the bond to be callable?
Absolutely. Great point there, Alan. So unlike a home loan, which is typically refinancable at any time, the typical lockout period for refinancing for a municipal bond ranges from eight to 10 years. And particularly after the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act took effect in December of 2017, our ability to refinance early now no longer exists. So our opportunity, our window to refinance debt commences 90 days before that eighth, ninth, or 10th anniversary date of those bonds. I think most of these are nine or 10-year, nine or 10-year call dates here. So we're, we're taking advantage of these really as quickly as the market will and our legal covenants will enable us to do.
Any other questions for Jeff or staff?
Thank you. It's always nice to get a good report, Garret Jeff.
Hey, that's a, a, a long, difficult, heavy road to get here, huh?
Yeah, we appreciate all the, the great work that you've done with staff and commissions over the years that have got us to this point. It's been a major undertaking, but it's something we can be really proud of. We know we still have work to do, but it's, it's nice to see that we're halfway home.
It's excellent.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we'll move on to new business. First item, Consider of Resolution R 2934, authorizing the offering of the sale of general obligation bonds, Series DW and DX.
Mayor Commissioners, as Jeff had mentioned previously, this is to refinance several bonds. Both of these are, both of these are going to go, it's going to refinance into two. Some are taxable, some are exempt. Jeff, do you have anything you want to add? I know you kind of went over it before, but just give the opportunity.
I, I don't.
Okay. We'll be happy to answer any questions. And just to be clear, this is not extending the period of any of the bonds. This is keeping the period the same. The savings come strictly from the interest savings.
So we're not kicking the can down the road?
Correct.
No, that's not allowed.
No, that's not allowed.
Good.
I'd move to approve Resolution 2934 as presented.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Next item, Consideration of Resolution R 2935, setting a public hearing date of July 7, 2020, to address condemnation of 420 West Pine Street. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. We have before you consideration for removal of a property at 420 West Pine. The following structure was found to be unsafe and dangerous. The pri, it is located at 420 West Pine Street. It's found to have damage and is dangerous and unsafe. Block foundation in certain areas is falling apart. The exterior has termite damage and the siding is chipping. There's holes, there's no utilities, and the interior of the home has animal feces creating a very bad health condition inside. We're requesting to move forward with a hearing to remove this property on July 7.
To kind of, to the Commissioner, process has to be, is the Commissioner has to put those in there that we would have a hearing, and then July 7, the property owner and any lien holders, if there's any, or have, have a piece of the action on that property, have a right to come to the Commissioner and I to explain that they don't completely believe the property should be torn down or tried to go. After that happens, we then pass another resolution setting a, a, if there were a drop dead date that you have to have your process done by, and if it's not done by then, we then go again and remove the prop, or move the structure. They'll ascend to the property if they don't pay it, and then assess to the taxes on their property. A lot of cases, of course, that the, the properties end up going, end up going delinquent and go to the tax sales. So a lot of times when we do this, we will never get our money back. Process, and that's why we budget 50,000 a year to keep getting properties that we have. Some cases, we've had some, we had one in the last round, I remember I, where in fact it was set to be torn down, and when the contractor went to the house, the person had sold, apparently somebody had given some notices to the buyer, and the buyer's going like, no, we want to do something, I, I think they're doing something.
The house has been renovated.
Yeah, they renovated, so. And again, the whole process, and we've had, there are people who talk about this process before, that, you know, we wish that the property owner, because once this happens, you add another $5,000 to $10,000 to the property to pay off back taxes, it makes that lot and that house tough to save. Lot high, but, but again, long process we do, and these people have been in contact a long time ago, so you've got to move at some point in time. I just wish that we wouldn't get to this point. Or people have properties, there's people out there that want to do flips, are willing to buy some of these houses, but, you know, again, if you just don't take care of it, then, and a lot of these we have also, I'm not saying everyone, has property tax issues right now. It is what it is.
Any other questions?
I'd move that we'd, I'd move that we'd approve Consideration of Resolution R 2935, setting a public hearing date of July 7, 2020, to address condemnation of 420 West Pine Street.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Consideration of Resolution R 2936, setting a public hearing date of July 7, 2020, to address condemnation of 308 North Washington Street. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioners, this property, primary structure located at 308 North Washington Street, is found to be dangerous and unsound. The foundation is deteriorating, cracking and settling. The roof has apparent leaks. The porch has some chipping of the structural materials. There's no electrical, no plumbing. The sewer is open and we have unsanitary conditions in the structure. There is sewage in the area, the structure, snake. There's no mechanical system, have rodents present, and also, this structure was a meth lab, a pretty powerful one. And it's been close to a year since that, that the law enforcement raided that structure, and nothing has been done to improve that structure. The chemicals that were used soak into the whole structure, so to properly rehabilitate it, it would have to go all the way down and be completely rebuilt. But this structure also, with the sewage backup problem, there's no electrical, no water, it is un, and with the sewer situation in the basement, it's just not inhabitable.
With a pending court case on that, is there anything that says we have to leave it in place until all that's resolved or not?
According to the records I have, we are good to go on this because they have, if you saw the pictures, they, there are over 400 pictures of this residence that they have taken. And so according to the hazmat technicians from Riley P D that were on scene, they said once they do their process, that structure.
Great, thank you.
No question, I just a statement more of, I appreciate the pictures that you provide us. When we're looking at this kind of stuff, just from my job, I knew exactly what was in that, that place. So, and for Chief, or previous Chief also realized what we were looking at when we were looking at those pictures, but just seeing the, even the previous home with the damage and the amount of repair, it's helpful to see the pictures.
Yeah.
We used to not get them.
We used to not get them, and Commissioner Landis and myself, we made sure that they're put in there now.
Just need to turn them now. Be 90 degrees.
We'll work on that, sir. We'll work on that, sir.
So in making decisions like this, it's nice to be able to see the pictures and not just read the report, you're actually...
Having, having those visuals gives you a sense of what has actually happened to the structure, and it gives you a sense of, is it past that step?
The added costs for demolition on this because of the meth lab?
No, it's where it's at. If they were to renovate it, that's a whole different story, but to tear it down and haul it to the landfill is pretty much haul it off.
Just that.
Because all the chemicals have been removed, it's just residual chemicals that are in the wood, the floors, any ventilation system or something, whatever's left.
Gotcha. Any other questions?
Move to approve Resolution 2936, setting a public hearing date of July 7 to address condemnation of 308 North Washington Street.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Consideration of Resolution R 2937, setting a public hearing date of July 7, 2020, to address condemnation of 609 West 10th Street.
Mayor, Commissioners, again, we have a primary structure located at 609 West 10th Street. It's found to have dangerous and unsafe conditions. The block foundation is failing, settling and caving in multiple areas. The asbestos siding is loose, cracked and chipped in multiple areas. Windows and doors are either inoperable or broken completely out. The roof has apparent damage and leaks. The chimney is crumbling. The porch is dilapidated and in very bad disrepair. There are no utilities, and the house is full of clutter and items with, that creates a very dangerous health condition.
Move to approve Resolution 2937 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, Consideration of Resolution R 2938, setting a public hearing date of July 7, 2020, to address condemnation of 134 East 15th Street.
Mayor, Commissioners, primary structure located 134 East 15th Street that's found to be dangerous and unsafe condition. It's a slab foundation, is deteriorated and cracked, and the exterior walls have water and fire damage from a fire from a year ago. The, there are missing, the windows are missing, the doors are broken, there's no active utilities, and it, due to the fire loss, the, the property owners have done nothing to fix it in the last year, so we're wanting to finish tearing it down and removing it.
Any questions?
Move to approve Resolution R 2938, setting a public hearing date of July 7, 2020, to address condemnation of 134 East 15th Street.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, Consideration of Resolution R 2939, setting a public hearing date of July 7, 2020, to address condemnation of 817 and 819 West 11th Street.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is another structure that had a fire, actually, both structures have had fires and were part of a juvenile's setting fire to the structure. What we're requesting is to remove this structure because of the fire loss to it, it is a complete loss, so what we're asking is for a hearing to completely remove this structure.
Move to approve Resolution 2939 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, Consideration of Resolution R 2940, setting a public hearing date of July 7, 2020, to address condemnation of 137 East 16th Street.
Mayor, Commissioners, the primary structure located at 137 East 6th Street is found to have dangerous, unsafe conditions. The stone foundation is failing in many places. The siding has previous termite damage, holes deteriorated. Windows and doors are either open or not operable or broken. There is an older roof and a rotten, the soffits are rotten and dilapidated, the fascia boards are in poor condition. The witting porches are dilapidated and rotten. There are no utilities to the structure, and there are apparent, there are apparent bug and rotted droppings, strong pet odors and animals living inside the structure.
Any questions?
I'd move to approve Consideration of Resolution R 2940, setting a public hearing date of July 7, 2020, to address the condemnation of 137 East 16th Street.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief.
Next item, Item H, Private Trash Hauler Discussion.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commission. Also Brian Goldstein's here as well, as he's handling the litigation. He and I have been discussing this matter, in case you have questions for either of us. I would recommend anything pertaining to litigation not be done out in the public meeting. One thing I've looked at here is the various options, just because we have had that litigation, and you'd asked me to look into what our various legal options are. I have four of these on to Public Works as well as Codes and Mr. Dinkle, as they would impact those divisions of the city, no matter which direction that we go in, if we go in any of these directions. As I pointed out, we had this ordinance change, which originally was $200 per private trash hauler. One of the things that we looked at is with the wear and tear that happens, as well as some of the administration, does that really cover, especially when it's 200 per hauler, not even 200 per truck? We didn't make an amendment to, based upon the grocery seats of 5%, and then we've reviewed that in light of Kansas statute. So one of the things, some of these concerns that I have are just making sure that we ensure legality, because one of the, the problems I noticed with the various statutes covering trash hauling, refuse collection, recycling, is there about eight, six different spots within the KSAs, Kansas statute annotated that you can find these? And so what you look at is you have a bunch of different areas where they've, because a lot of times, you know, you, when you get in a municipal, like water improvements, bidding, municipal court, it's all in one section right by each other, because that's where it should be. Here you got trash hauling in KSA 65, you've got two areas in the 12s, which covers municipalities. And so part of it is making sure we have what's covered, covered properly, and the other thing is, is almost nobody has litigated these issues. So we don't have the benefit as you see in criminal law, or you see in contractual or traffic, or, or some of the various labor issues, because we don't have a lot of litigation that says, okay, how do these statutes play with each other? We don't have that. And so that's kind of what we're looking at here. And so those kind of the things I want to make sure is we, we do the right thing and maintain the right thing is, so we don't run into. Other thing is, I think, policy-wise, we need to be concerned about the citizens, because what, what costs it to them as well as what costs it to the city, because if increases cost to the city, it must increase cost to the citizens. The other thing is, is our community is choices. I think from what I've seen personally, is the choice, the options is very important. So we look at something that limits choices that may or may not impact how the citizens view it, because if we say you can only use one trash hauler, or you have to use a particular one because you live in this neighborhood, I think that'd run into an issue and maybe some uproar there. So these are all the things we take into consideration as we look at these. Also, there has been just the question about city funds raised by Mr. Olles before in public comment, since we do the transfer every year of approximately 10% of the sanitation income, though not required, the city's done that consistently for a number of years. That's some additional background that I found, and so this added, that's not contained in the packet. When you look at weight limits for vehicles, garbage trucks are an exemption to those weight limits, except for the overall gross rule. Those gross rules cover essentially 80,000, and the interstate for gross weight, 85,500 pounds on non-interstate roads. So that's kind of what we're looking at, if you have two axles, they're limited, three axles are grand, a bit more leeway in terms of what their gross weight can do. And so one thing I found out was there's some 2001, 2003 testimony before Congress that dealt with KIPS, that's basically the pressure on the road from, per axle. I'm no physicist, but, or engineer, but what it ended up boiling down to is to take a common passenger car approximately 38 pound, 38, 3,800 pounds compared to a 48,000 pound garbage truck, because that's 48,000 garbage truck because of its weight, because as, as you get increased weight, it actually exponentially, not just, it's not just a linear growth, but it's exponential growth and that's impact on the roads and the damage. So basically, 148,000 pound garbage truck is worth about 9,646 cars per pass. That's kind of what you're looking at here, and then just take into account that we have garbage trucks that are going down the roads, is they'll go down a road to collect trash, and at minimum, they're going to go twice, because they get one side and go down and get the other. And then also, what you're looking at, we have four trash haulers in town currently, so that's eight passes per week on one road at a minimum. Now, what we're looking at here is over 52-week period, is you're looking at about 416 passes on one particular road. Now, I'm not saying that trash haulers should cover all of the expenses, that's the thing to take into consideration on the wear and tear there. So what we have is various areas to find the laws, there are license fees, there are franchise fees, there's also a thing that they passed in about 2011, 2013, the Organized Collection Service Act. Also, some options is the city could take over all trash hauling, the city could get out of trash hauling, or we could quit, quit collecting trash and go with one hauler that we contract with. So license fees, that's one of the proposals we're looking at, the current one. Basically, we have to look at the administrative cost, the, basically the cost that is to the city to allow that business to occur, is what we're allowed to do in a fee. It can't be a tax, it can't be based on income, it can't be based on basically the transactions that occur, but just for the existence of that and what it costs us as a city to allow that to happen in the city. That's kind of what we were looking at last meeting, we're looking at massage therapy and looking at the cost of licenses, is what cost is it to Jeremy Bright and the rest of Codes to actually enforce those? That's kind of what we're looking at there, because you, you take into account the paperwork, the application, the background, if there is one, the inspections that happen randomly and taking into their time and effort with that, as well as supplies. But the thing that we look at here is, there has been some comparison of trash trucks, well, you allow tree trimmers, you allow moving vehicles, you allow food trucks. You have a consistency, as well as you run to the weight issue of trash trucks compared to other vehicles, because of the weight that they carry on them. Also, residential roads, I, I don't know all of it, but we can run the overlay and the thickness of the road, as well as how it's made, take wear and tear, because you have arterial roads that are a bit deeper, but thicker and, and more robust than some of those residential roads as well, so it's kind of how the wear and tear deals with there. I'll stick into account with this license fee is the city does transfer, as I said before, that, that basically boils down to $40,000 or $53,333 per year per city truck that we use for trash. Franchise fee, as I said, there's an attorney general's opinion that allows for that. Basically, what we can do is, because this actually occurs on a city street, we can regulate the business that happens there. Granted, there are specifics regarding that statute that act about various utilities, but it does say that carries on streets. Trash trucks are going up and down the streets. What we can do, the thing to be careful is we cannot allow an exclusive franchise, so we can't say, okay, one of the three private trash haulers, you get an exclusive franchise here. We have to allow all of them, at least allow them to apply, if not grant it to them. So what we have to look at there is how would we structure those? I'd recommend if we went down this road, basically having a uniform franchise fee. So basically, look, if you want to do trash, you need to have a franchise, and here's the agreement of how we do it, and they can come before the commission to ask for that franchise to be extended. Be similar to kind of what we do with, because we, you know, we, we have Be similar to kind of what we do with, because we, you know, we have multiple electric companies here. So we allow DSNL, we allow Evergy, and so we have basically essentially the same, or very similar franchise fees for them, and they're still in the same city. Organized Collection Service, this is a thing that their attorney had said that we need to do, and I'm not sure it applies, as I put out my memo, because to be an organized collection service, you actually have to go down for multiple haulers and reduce it to assume a contract hauler or one conglomeration haulers. What we do is we run into an issue, is that really what we want to do is narrow down the number of people there for a service? If we do, we can go through a process for it, but one of the problems here is you, that, as well as there's a time. Basically. Start it. So. The good and the bad is because of dealing with the bureaucracy, is there are requirements for basically public hearings with that, which are fine to do. We also have to have, allow and required to have input from people throughout the process, which we do anyway. But we, it's required by statute to have the various trash haulers and recycle haulers in record, they put their input, as well as we have to have a detailed justification for why we're doing what we're doing. Granted, no matter what we're going to do, we're going to have a justification for it. We're still, regardless of if we go down this road. That's why I'm not sure it applies to us. Like I said, it must be done by ordinance, because it's basically we have to do a resolution of intent to say, hey, we want to look at doing this. A ninety-day period of giving notice to all the trash haulers that we're going to be doing this, we have a public hearing to say, yes, we are doing this. And then we have to have the ninety-day period then of having the plan ready to go then pass, and then eighteen-month period to then go, okay, then we're going to implement it and not inhibit anybody during that time. And then as I said, it has to be a very detailed plan, go through all the detail of why we're doing it, what we're doing it, who was a part of it, who contributed. As I said, at minimum, it's eighteen months, but if you don't pass it within a year of the resolution intent, then you have to start the whole process over again. Refuse collection with municipal function, this kind of covers into one if we do it as we're doing it currently, is we can say, hey, the city's going to be providing trash, or back as we previously did with Viola, is we can contract somebody like Viola to do trash. We can prohibit others by statute from, other than the contractor or the city, from taking part of that. Again, with the interplay is if we'd be reducing the haulers down to one, would we run into the issue of being required to go to the Organized Collection Service? That's a question we have to look into, because that's a newer statute, the OCS is compared to this one. This was passed back in the nineteen forties, nineteen fifties, whereas the OCS is in the last decade. So typically, the newer statute will take precedence in how it's interpreted compared to older statute, unless explicitly said otherwise. But that's an option that we have there. Also, this is how we can pay for it, it's a general fund, or we can have service charges, or we can do both. Now, if the city doesn't provide it, we can basically, hey, the city pulls out, the city's no longer going to collect trash. And then all we do is we allow licenses, we can limit the number of licenses, okay, we're going to give out four licenses, we're going to give out three licenses, and here's how much they cost for those licenses and regulation. We can also combine with the county, combine with other cities to get into these. I know there are a lot of small communities that will get together and contract for trash, that's an option that we'd have. But I don't see the city of, being a city of first class, with our population, that would make much sense to combine with their city or even the county on that. And that's what I have for the various options. Basically, it's anywhere from, we get out of it completely, we eliminate everybody else, or we look at an option down the middle where maybe franchise fees or license fees that are justified, or we can do the organized collection service.
I have a comment, something to bring me to comment on. Twenty fifteen, the city transferred eighty-five thousand dollars from trash to a general fund. Now going to about one, going to one sixty for the last five years, and I will anticipate going for next year. The city collects roughly one point nine million dollars in trash fees every year. Our expenses average one point two million dollars. And then we transfer, I mean, and then we transfer our, actually, to our transfer to general fund for that profit there. What we've done is, is when I first came here five years ago, we needed to buy a trash truck, we had to borrow the money. Now, today, and it is part of the cash reserve, and I'd like to have in all of our funds, guns and trash. If Ray blew two trucks today, we could go buy them. Have to go through financing, we have the money in place, that's become very important. Not that I would want to, but by having a cash reserve like we built in trash, if we get more COVID issues that cause problems, use utility fees to help you out. So it's important to have strong reserves in your utilities. State statute, they can be transferred anytime by the city commission, if they're going to surplus funds. There's no definition of surplus is, in my mind, I have, unless you transfer one dollar, but the point is, we have those available. So I think trash service here is an important component of our total finances as well. You know, I don't know, my favorite option always has been, is the franchise fees. Basically saying, you know, and I'll let the legal eagles talk about the legal side of it, is basically saying that as of X day, the city is the owner hauler in town, if you want to haul, we have to get a franchise agreement. Like I said, we have franchise, like Britain said, we have franchise agreement with both of our electric companies. Our gas company, of course, the electric companies are almost identical. I don't know how many franchise agreements we have for telecommunications, we have more than one of those as well. And those, and they collect those funds and give them to the city. So again, we're not creating anything. In a lot of cities that have one service only, they have a franchise in place. I know a smaller city where I used to manage, they got out of the trash business after I left there, and they went ahead and they still, they want to ensure that everybody in town has trash service. That's one of the reasons why municipal came around, is everybody needs to have trash. Because that way, I don't, you know, I take care of my trash, but we don't have my neighbor throwing trash all over the place, and that's, that's a good, that's a normal thing to do. But I know that city, they went ahead and have a franchise fee, but they also actually collect the money for the one company they chose. Again, that population is twenty-five higher, not twenty-three, twenty-four thousand, so a lot different there, of course. But they receive in there three or four percent, whatever it'd be, to do the collections. Bill comes from the trash company to the city, the city collects it, and it uses a commission for doing it. There are some options out there, but I think, a lot of times we'll think about getting out of the trash business, and part of me, you know, thinks about that too. But I think the importance of what it's done to our total financial package should not be lost. Again, I don't want to use utilities to bail out general fund, but it gives you another piece of confidence in there. And by doing what we've done in the funds, when earlier Mr. White talked about how we've increased our cash reserves, we've done it in the general fund, we've done it in all our funds to make a strong package. That's going to help us, I mean, it's really, I think we can underplay the importance that those reserve funds and what we've been able to do has on our bond ratings and everything else. I mean, it's out there in a utility fund, but with state statute where you can transfer utility funds, it gives us that base that we can really build on and have, and heaven forbid something bad happens, we can survive through it.
Well, and as I was reading this, my first thought was, along those lines, was let's get out of the trash business as a city and contract with one company that can offer just trash or trash and recycling. That way, we still are providing the choices that you had discussed. And then looking at some of the smaller cities, again, the city handles the billing, they make one to three, four bucks a household on billing plus a franchise fee, so twenty-three thousand people in town, ten thousand houses, if we make four bucks a bill, it's actually more profitable for us to get out of the trash business, in my opinion. And then we're eliminating overhead, eliminating, you know, trucks and that sort of thing, and then that frees up Public Works to do sewer, streets, water, what they do best, and leaves the trash to the trash people that they do best.
I agree. But if we got rid of the trash truck, we also lose employees. So our overhead does, our overhead is a direct relationship, now get that under control. I mean, it's not, in other words, we have overhead, but with the, with, you know, the numbers I talked about before, we cover that overhead, you know, and we increase our reserves every year, and that's important to do. Because, I mean, you got to replace trucks, and we've built to the point, like I said, our reserves that if Ray convinced I blew two trucks, excited about it, but I go, we got it. And I think that's so important, what we've done. So I'm not sure if there's a fair comparison. I get what you're saying, part of me wants to get out of business and have one hauler in town. I do know from listening to conversations that I've had with Mr. Brown and other employees over here ten, fifteen years ago, when they wanted to go to a single service in this town, people do like the choices. But I also think it's important for us to, when we have those choices, there was a Britain had, when four trucks are going down that same residential street, they give away. What it does, this gives, you know, everybody paying the same. We don't do a franchise fee in trash, we do a transfer. We go to a franchise fee, our transfer is probably higher than that franchise fee normally would be, which is good. Trust, the city is under no obligation, if we got to the point where trash, we had no money, we couldn't transfer over, we wouldn't transfer. We're not in that situation, don't anticipate that situation, so that's not going to happen.
Did I hear you right, that we make about seven hundred thousand dollars a year over our operating costs for the trash? You said one point two?
That's how we've been able to build our reserves.
And we make about one point, one point two to operate at, one point. So we make seven hundred thousand dollars a year, basically, I almost no brainer, I mean, that's.
And like I said, what we've done, and since I've been here, and I'd have to go back and look at the twenty-fifteens, I remember Ray needed a truck back, it was even a backup truck, like forty, fifty thousand dollars, and we had to borrow to get it. Now having responsible utility that can do these things, what, this is what the city should operate. And again, that reserve helps, it's part of that whole package that makes our whole financial is going where it's going.
It was a big huge thing back in the, I don't know if you remember or not, but they had one time made a deal with, it was going to be waste management, was going to be our sole hauler, believe in, they were going to buy it for one million dollars. And after that, the city was going to get out of the business, and there was such an outcry from the public about lack of choice. And then, you know, now we make one point five million in two years, or one point four million in years as it is, so I think we're in the right track, I think we just need to figure out what we want to do as far as a franchise fee, and get a recommendation from you, Mr. Dinkle, as to what we need to do here.
And the legal side.
And the legal side, of course.
But if we went to a private contractor, got out of the business and just handled the billing, we're looking at, you know, fifty, forty, fifty thousand dollars a month, and we're not doing anything but mailing water bills.
Again, like I said, that's something we need to know for sure, is to, but.
Quarter hours to handle it or not, it'd probably be closer to about three to five percent.
How many employees are there for sanitation service?
Seven.
Seven? How many trucks? Five trucks and seven employees.
Something that plays in totally, Craig Bender with MAC has been working with Ray. Army is trying to get local partnerships. One of the partnerships that's been talked about is we haul the, not the residential trash, but local trash. And Ray has worked with, because Craig wants to do one, and we get that. If we get that, we'd have to buy some more trucks, we'd have more revenue. Reason why, the only reason I'm probably in favor of that is one, of course, I like the partnership with Fort Riley. Secondly, it'll give us more backup vehicles to have in our total fleet, nothing's important. We're not done with that one yet, and that's been one of those, any of those NICS, NICS?
Excess.
Excess agreements with Fort Riley. Take a long time, and you always say, let's get them, I always say, tell us what's legal first, what you're going to allow, and then we'll tell you if we can do it, but go through a lot of lawyers.
So I, my big question is cost, I mean, so I just, I read through this whole thing today, and then I read where it said the city pays forty to fifty-three thousand per truck per year, right?
That essentially winds up, roughly coming out to, because when you transfer, that's a hundred and sixty thousand.
A hundred and sixty thousand.
And so even though there's a fleet of five trucks, my understanding from Mr. Rivera is three to four run a week?
Correct.
So then, that's why, how I got the fifty-three thousand or the forty thousand number is, if you run three to four trucks per week, and you transfer, that's basically what ends up being transferred based upon those trucks. That's kind of how we generated some of those numbers and looking at those various schemes before.
So what is the, and I guess the question, if it's good to ask, you know, what is the fees that we charge again to the the contract or the companies that come in here to use, Howie's and?
Well, I don't know what we're really charging now, but what we're, what we're looking at originally, before we had any change, was two hundred dollars per hauler.
Right, okay.
And then ended up changing it to the five percent of the gross receipts from here. And then what we looked at after that was the possibility of roughly forty-eight hundred dollars per truck. We want to just check those numbers to make sure they actually lie in the administrative and the city costs from that. But that ends up being approximately maybe forty-eight thousand, forty-eight hundred a year based upon per truck from each hauler, so however many trucks they choose to run here, or they choose to run one or whatever, it ends up being roughly ten to, ten to twelve percent of what we'd be transferring per vehicle for us.
Right, so a big difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're unusually quiet.
Well, I've been waiting patiently, which isn't like me. I've always felt that it's very important that you take care of your moneymaker, your revenue stream. That is the first thing we did when I got here on the commission. I believe we have nine of our funds were in the red when I started in two thousand and eleven. Nine in the red, didn't make a thing, lost money. So that's one of the first things we did, was to correct, have appropriate fees for services and goods that were provided. And we did that, and we've done it well. And I don't think we need to goof it up and give it away. I think that's a huge mistake. And I think we support local jobs by having positions for guys that live here and participate in the community and and that, I think that's important, instead of sending jobs out of our town. Like, that's not a good thing. I wish we had recycling, I wish we had an agreement with Fort Riley, that we could haul recycling out there every week, I think that would be awesome. Hasn't happened since I've been here, I'm not sure if it's ever going to happen. But that's, that's the one downside by what we do, I think Waste Management's the only one that does that right.
Always does as well.
Always does, okay, great. But, and I think, aren't our fees less than anybody else's around?
We're close. The, we do have people that's currently a higher fee because they live like on Spring Valley Road where I live, and our houses are further apart.
Sure.
More rural-like, even though we're in the city limits.
I don't like the idea of four sets of trucks going up and down our streets every day, I don't like that at all. And I never thought about it. And I know how bad my alley has gotten from when I first moved to this house, it's just beat to pieces. I mean, it's like driving on the moon right now. But I know, I understand people like their choice, that's, that's great, but I just, I'm not thrilled about having multiple services do the same thing, to be at the same streets. This money that we're taking in, we're just spending it on asphalt. That's what we're doing. We're allowing four services to come here and beat up our streets, and then put asphalt back down. And we do nothing with the alleys. Whereas if we add one service that did it, one set of trucks, that's three times less abuse on your streets. Right? So the money that we're taking in is great, but we're just allowing more damage to the streets as it is. I think we need one service and that's it, and I would prefer that it be us, if it's me. I mean, not everybody in town's going to be happy with that, and they're going to be, I mean, you think that any animal control stuff brings people out of this? Trash service is really going to bring people out, but that's, that's my thought. I'd have to see a pro forma on what you're talking about, to really see if this does pencil it all, which, I don't know if we can do that or not, but I understand what you're saying, I get it.
No, and that's, so is that the direction we want to give Britain, is to put a pen and paper to? in paper to what it looks like with one hauler in our community, whether it's us or a contractor? Is that the guidance we want to give?
To go to a single contractor, would we have to do the collection servicing and all that two-year period?
That's a possibility.
Okay, that's my only concern with that. You know, no bones bad, I've always agreed with, have franchise fee for them. We do damage, move over to the general fund, they do damage, repair fund as well. And we could address some things, and I'm not arguing that we don't. It's always about budget, and we all understand that. So I'm not arguing we don't need to do more street work, but do what we can do with the budget we have. Can argue with somebody, we're gonna go, yeah, just need more money, and that's not...
Can you put a limit on the number of secondary trash haulers in town? That they have to bid for it, as a secondary option for, for anybody in the town to say, to do that?
I, I think the only way that we could limit numbers under the statutes would be if the city got completely out, then we can have the ability to limit the number of licenses. We could, there's the possibility that, I think, either through the old statute or the new scheme, we could kick all the private haulers out. But in regard to saying, but if we want to maintain the city providing hauling, whether it's through a contractor or by the city itself, and then limiting numbers, I think we'd run into a potential issue there of not being able to do that.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask a quick, how many households Junction City, and I know there's somewhere in the bottom line of ten thousand water accounts in my career, how many of those households take trash? About sixty-four hundred of the, of the ten thousand?
What percent of the commercial trash is...
Is there a reason for that? Because of our prices, or we just not outfitted to handle the commercial?
Part of it is we don't run out too for some of that, what they're requiring us, what they want.
Could we just do residential only, and the private guys could do commercial? Could we do that?
That's, that's a possibility, because I know that's how Alatha does it. So that's something we look into now. A part of that would depend on if they were a pre or post OCS thing, of how that would maybe affect it, but that's something that we could look into.
Have you thought about how much it would take, how many more vehicles it would take if we went to a single service such as Junction City? How many more vehicles it would take for the city to have to buy to be able to put the fleet out there to do the services that's being done right now? Have we looked at that?
Probably not that many. Not that many. We probably, and maybe. Drive and buy them now.
Right.
They're driving by ours right now. I mean, we're all driving by each other's.
Four of us, four of us are driving on a residential street by the same garbage can, yeah.
Regardless of who it is, you know.
I'm a little bit with the mayor, or the vice mayor, about the city taking over trash hauling. I just feel that, that that's a, would be a good road for us to go down. But I think ultimately, I want to hear what you think, Mr. Dinkle. I just, I, I think the mayor's right, the vice mayor's right about that. I like the idea of this. I know there's gonna be a big row about it, though. And if I thought pit bulls were bad, this ought to really be a good one.
That's what I said. Don't mess with my trash.
So is that what we, kind of the will of the board is to look at a single hauler option?
Well, I think we take a look at the residential slash commercial, and we separate that.
Yeah.
Because to get a commercial for us would take an investment. And then again, I don't know how many of the privates would stay if they want.
And I think we, we need some information, too, on what's the breakdown of how many customers do we have versus ones we don't have? I think we need to see that.
Right, beautiful then.
Ten dollars. What's the projection, what the projection would be for if we did take all the, all those full ten thousand accounts, and what kind of a...
Just doing the quick math, and this is public record, so if I name, they, they could, it's a lawsuit. We were, as, we were, since we put the five percent in last summer, we're averaging about a thousand, ten thousand dollars a month, give or take, right? That's pretty close. So, and that, that would make sense, because if he had, if we have sixty-five percent of the customers, now residential, there'd be a commercial. So we, we do the ones, the math comes out about right. I mean, we'll do a more closer analysis on that. You know, I've always said, you know, there is cities with multiple trash haulers, privates, do the same thing, you know. And for sure, I could find a city out there that trash hauler A gets that part of town, trash hauler B gets that part of town, or some combination of it. That's another option to do as well, but then you lose choice, because, you know, I mean, the advantage of the four haulers, and again, I like the idea of the one myself, the advantage is you've had a lot of people with long-term relationships with the company. And I, I get that. I'm not opposed to that. I'm not opposed to that whatsoever. But again, it's being practical about it, but I think the initial idea was to make a fair, fair playing field, where I as a customer, the city, or anybody that's a customer of the city, is putting money into the general fund to allow for street repairs, and hopefully alleys and everything else, and we would just put everybody at the same level. That's all it is.
I do think people like choice. I mean, I get people in my, my community that I've talked with who like choice. They know that city charges this much, Howie's charges this much. And so I know that there's a choice out there. So I know it's a tough one, and it is gonna be a tough decision. It's gonna be, and we're gonna hear a lot about it from everybody, but...
The utilities as a whole, and I always say this, you have a choice on electric, town, your West Star if you live. Mr. Brown's West Star, I live a stone throw away, and I'm DSO, and neither one of us can switch. It is what it is. And I pay more than he pays, by the way. But, just saying. But, natural gas company, it's one. Water company, it's one, it's us in that case. Sure company, it's us. I always say, you know, cities can, I can argue that cities aren't a legalized monopoly, but that's why I always preach to staff, let's don't act like it. Let's treat customers and provide the service we have to give. And one thing I'm real proud of the last few years is our service and everything we do, though not perfect, has improved.
Yeah, not all the emails we get say Ray's staff is perfect.
Yeah.
All right.
So I will look at the city's sole provider, and city's sole provider residential, maybe allow private to be open.
We do have commercial people that we pick up for, right? I mean, businesses, so...
Get that together, and hopefully next commission meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, consideration of the request to award the installation of a ten-inch water valve and line stop in the 900 block of North Perry Street to municipal pipe services in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, public received a call on Thursday, May 16th, that a ten-inch water main and brake head occurred on the 900 block of North Perry Street. To make the repairs, we had to shut down that water main. But we were able to, we were not able to do so, because there was a cross connection in that line somewhere. We tried many ways to try to get the thing shut down, to make the repairs, could not do that. So we had to call Municipal Pipe Supply to install a line stop, so that I could shut that water down. The reason we had to get it down is because we were not able to keep the pressure at more than sixty pounds per, per line, per square inch in the line. We were down to about twenty. And what happened was that the jail, the police department, and various parts on the east side of town, and as far as Chestnut Street, we were losing water, we lost the pressure on some of the ability to get that sixty pounds or seventy pounds of pressure in there. So what we're looking for is to install a ten-inch water valve, I mean, ten-inch water valve on this section of pipe, so I can help isolate that line. We're also looking with Call Valley to try to find what kind of connections we have that are making these difficult for us to make these type of repairs. Funds are available within the waterfront to ma, for these repairs, and staff recommends that we approve allowing us to install that ten-inch valve in, on 900 block of North Perry Street, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Did this project go out to bid?
Excuse me, mayor?
Did this go out to bid, or how did you land on municipal pipe services?
There, there's only a few companies that do that, and they're the closest company I had. I had to call this company in, and they got here at eleven o'clock at night. We did not be able to shut down that line until 3:30 that morning to get everything back up. But they have done numerous line stops for us on various lines that we were not be able to shut down.
This would actually fall in there, but first and then, or the emergency.
Gotcha, okay.
Get that one away, and it's important to the community. And I applaud Ray for trying to give a remiss to start fixing our problems and before we...
We seem to have had quite a few main breaks, seems like. Is it just because of the, how old they are, or?
It's a little combination of both, though. I mean, I'm sure that line is probably, probably about fifty, sixty years old. You get, sometimes what happens, you get the drought conditions, soil shrinks away from the line, then you get that little movement in there and disturb. Sometimes you get oversaturated, and it causes these problems that we have.
Mr. Larson, I think, we see like we have a lot, I talk to my friends in Emporia, Pika, probably have a tenth of what they have in Emporia.
Yeah.
Keep replacing, and part of our process we have with all of our...
It seems like, I mean, they're needed. It seems like you always are finding something additional once the ground is open. So, I mean, we gotta fix it, we gotta fix it.
Right.
Part of it.
We have water projects, and we talked about something, we got, we got a twenty-inch line that needs to be moved down the road. Concrete mixed that's in there, beneath the airport. Okay, and we had a break in it a couple of years ago.
Right.
And we had to get it back out of Texas.
Correct.
That's what we had to fix it. Those are the improvements we're making, you know.
Yep. Any other questions for Ray?
I moved up through the award, to award the work of municipal pipe services from the amount, after C sixteen thousand is presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Questions?
Next item, set budget work, budget work session dates in June and July.
As you know, with the recent COVID virus, kind of unknown of how revenue is gonna come out, so we've kind of proposed a work session, about as far as we can, to get as much data as we can, for all these numbers together. So that's why we're proposing that we do work sessions towards the end of July. I do want to add that on the memo, we have June 23 listed as a possible date, however, that is no longer available. So our new proposal is June 30th, and don't add a per. If that doesn't work, of course, we can explore any other options that work best for you guys, but that would be our proposal for dates. Of course, if we do need additional time, go to July 7th as an alternative before the regular commission meeting. Happy to answer any questions?
Try to start these at six o'clock.
So we're shooting for June 30th and July 1?
If you can go back to back, I mean...
Depending on the dates that we choose, we could vary the location, because there is a court in here.
On a Wednesday night, Thursday's the problem. And we've done Thursday before, but the problem with Thursday is we're over there, and we don't, we are in broadcast.
Yeah. Actually, good with those dates.
It's six o'clock, right?
Correct.
I'm good with that.
Those dates work for me.
I'm working on it.
Gotcha.
I'm good.
Uh, that... So you said the 29th and 30th, or 30th and 1st?
Thirty, thirty.
Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yep. Tuesday's good, and Wednesday's good. We're good. Yep.
We'll have, we'll have, it's probably in the next week or so, you can start, I think, two weeks. Somebody has to get, everything.
He said the means will be here?
Here, we'll send, we'll do the broadcast.
All right. Do we need to make a motion to set those dates or anything?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Moving on, commissioner comments. I will start by making a little bit of an announcement. Today, the Gary County Health Department confirmed the first death of COVID-19 in Gary County. The patient had tested positive and had been a patient at Gary Community Hospital. It was a sixty-five-year-old male. So on behalf of the City of Junction City, I wish to extend condolences to, to the family. And this is a reminder to all citizens of Junction City and Gary County to continue to take the virus serious, seriously, and follow all recommended guidance. I also want to make a comment and say that, you know, we appreciate the peaceful protests that have went on in, in our community. We as a city take the current situation in our country very seriously, and we'll continue to expect our police department to uphold the highest, highest standards of integrity and service to all people. So we thank you guys for that, and, and everything as well. So on to the commissioner comments. Commissioner Butler?
June 12th is the Army birthday, and so Military Affairs Council will not be having a breakfast this month. We weren't sure if we're gonna have it anyway, but they're gonna combine and do, it's a virtual birthday celebration with Fort Riley on June 12th. I am not sure of the time. I didn't write it down. So I can get you the time, or get old Craig, he's the one that did it. So just, just so we're right, we plan to start back the MAC breakfast in July, if gatherings are permitted at that time for that size. And if not, we will have, may have to adjust some things depending upon where we are on that one. And I, I kind of sent Alan a note today, but they, I just want to do a shout out to Alan and Lindsay, the city department heads, the previous, recent city commissioners, for the work that you guys have done on the budget over the past years, and in key, and bringing our debt load down. I mean, it's, it's important to take a look at this and to see that the city in almost, I want to say, I think since 2013, except for one year, has kept the mill levy flat. And the one year it went up, and the next year it went right back down to what it was. And I think that's a, that's a testament to the city understanding and caring for the well-being of the cities, citizens. And so I just want to, just a shout out to say thank you, guys. It's, it's good. When I came back after being gone for five years, and that was all I heard, because I left at the height of all this stuff going on, and then came back and, you know, it was, it was just, I heard bad things. So, yeah, that's good. The, and I just want to kind of follow on what the mayor said a little, just a moment. The, today I heard a, a podcast by Dr. Tony Evans. I don't know if anybody listens to him, but just a phenomenal pastor out of Dallas. And he stated this, and it just caught me what he stated. He said that healing must begin with civic leaders, and I agree with that. I think that's important for the nation as a whole. And one statement he said was this. He said, leaders must be agents of healing, not division. And I thought, you know, that says a whole lot. And our nation's going through some tough times. We have, I mean, I think, I think America needs a Snickers bar, you know, to get this thing all started all over again in 2020, because it's just been a bad year with everything that's going on. And I've heard it said that, and, and I've said it, that my heart hurts for our nation. It really, really hurts for this nation. And I'm reminded of a verse of scripture that I think we would all do well to practice more often. And the scripture says this, it's from 1 Corinthians 13:2, and it says, "If I have faith that can move mountains, but I don't have love, I am nothing." And to me, that is something that we as citizens of Junction City, Gary County, Kansas, and the nation, that we need to, we need to understand that we need to respect all people. And I think it would be really good for us to improve our ability to love other people. Junction City is a diverse community. I am so grateful that my kids grew up in this community. And because they got to experience things that I did. And when I grew up in this, in a town of Richmond, Kentucky, we were very separate. I mean, we, we were, we had two different high schools, and we didn't have the diversity we had here. My kids grew up in a community having, having friends that were of different colors, red, brown, black, it didn't matter, and they, they didn't see that. And it was great, and still today. And it was great, and still today, they recognize that. And so I, I think it's great, and I'm glad we were able to do that. And I think that as leaders, that we just need to continue to work with community leaders to build on that foundation that's been laid out here before us. We've got a great, great city. And again, Chief, I thank you guys for, for doing what you all do as police officers here in the peaceful protest the other day. And, and I just think our nation's, it's time for healing, and we're moving in that direction, and I think we will. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Commissioner Brown?
I echo Mr. Butler's comments there. I think these are some tough times, and I think we'll come through, and we're a strong nation. Kristi Rodriguez, as well you know, was appointed the executive director of the Flinno's Regional Council. I'm sure she's going to hit the ground running, and I think that this is an outstanding choice for Flinno's Regional Council. And I don't think I have anything further, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson?
It's hard to follow the words of the pastor over there, but Animal Shelter Board, we meet next week. I know Vanessa is going to be receiving the big check from Petco, I believe, here in the next week or two over in Manhattan, so I'm going to try to take off from work for a couple hours to be able to be there with her for that. Mrs. Stein?
I got my orange on for you. And I got some more for you on Friday, so I promise at work, I was out in the community today before my job, wearing my orange. So, I, as I said, you know, we have some stuff, I don't know, I think it's important that your voices are being heard. That's one reason why I wanted to be with the city commission was to be able to be a voice for myself and for others who maybe don't feel like their voice is always being heard or acted on. So, get involved. This is election year, so if you don't like how some things are going, senators, representatives, we got some county stuff, elections going on as well. So, go to the polls. That's one way you can have your voice be heard as well. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I want to thank Chief Johnson and his staff for their cleanup job here in Junction City. It's great to see these dilapidated structures. I can only imagine being a neighbor of, you know, seeing that next door to you every day, and nothing's ever being done. So, thank you. I think that's really great. When I started on the city commission, a lot of people told me I was nuts to even want to do it. And because there are many in this town that didn't felt we could be governed, governed effectively locally because of the disastrous economic situation. And everything starts with people. You got to have good people that want to do the right thing and, and take on the challenge and meet the challenge. And sometimes it takes a long time to walk up that hill, but we're getting there. I mean, I think our report card, like I said tonight, is showing that. I mean, it's dramatic. When a city only has a couple hundred grand in the, in their bank account at the end of the year, it was, we were fortunate, we never had a big disaster. But these little, you know, these little, little steps along the way, all these little things, our revenue streams, we've got, we've got to keep those intact, and we've got to provide quality service for our community, and we're doing that. And we're fixing more streets every year, and little things like that, we're, we've just got to, got to keep going. We get to 2024, those payments come down even some more, maybe there'll be some more of those bonds that we can refinance again, and you can get even more savings for our community. So, it's really a pleasure to see that. I think everyone's heart in this country hurts right now for family of Mr. Floyd and, and the African-American community in general. The video was powerful, and I think everybody needed to see that. Otherwise, it's just another story that's over in two minutes. And hopefully that will be a, a cause for change. I think, you know, there's, there's really, I think, just a few bad apples here and there. I don't, I don't think this is everywhere we have, you know, I'm very proud of our police department. I mean, they've, you know, when you got to deal with some knuckleheads every now and then, but you still maintain your professionalism, you still treat people the right way, and but you do your job in a, in a professional manner. That's so important. But hopefully, this, this incident will spark change around the country and, and raise that awareness. But it's been a tough year, but you know what? We are resilient. We can get through this, but we got to work together. Can't be divisive, can't be point fingers, got to work towards a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dinkle?
A few things, as always. In the, Mr. White's presentation tonight, there's an old rule that a lot of city majors use, that you never want your general obligation debt, forget the revenue debt because that's a different ballgame, the water and those things, that's, that's our enterprise. Never want your general obligation to get above $1,000 to $1,500 per capita. Always make comment that if I could make it here and there five years, we'll get it to the point where you should start worrying. I mean, by 2025, this stuff will be down to 30 to, 35 to 40 million dollars of general obligation debt. Also, along with the debt reduction we've made here, we have another $8 million in debt with Kansas Department of Transportation. When I got here, it was $12 million. In fact, at that time, we had half of the KIDI money, giving there for street projects and work, those things. So, it all works together. And again, I think, I think we all expressed gratitude to the public last year for believing. In November last year, we asked them to vote for, to keep the 1% sales tax dedicated to debt for another 10 years. One, it makes our numbers better, but I think when you roll that 2025 range, when you have that revenue, when you start getting those years where instead of paying the $10, $11 million general obligation debt and payments, get it down to $6 million, that's when you're going to have funds in this community to do the things, be it economic development or anything you have. And, and, you know, I look at it and, and, you know, when I first got here five years ago, it was like, that's a long ways away. But now we're to the point, as Commissioner Miles says, where we can see it and work hard for the next three years, I think we'll reap the benefits. But it's not just the city staff, it's not just the commission, it's not just employees, it's everybody in this community that, that's stuck with it, and, and I think, as we all said, get through it. Jeff always talks about our debt was fragile back then, and it still is. I always say we went from fine china fragile, we're now down to everyday dishes fragile. And about five years, we'll get down to paper plate fragile. That's where I want to be with that. I think that's real important, and it's, it's salute there by the community as well. We did get noticed today, and I have a lot of questions yet, that we're going to, we received $167,000 of CBG COVID funding, we had applied for $400,000. I haven't seen why they cut back. We filed one of the first applications. I got a feeling somebody decided to share with us all communities a little more, but I don't know that for a fact. I do have a letter, Jeff Longbine is working on my behalf, and I also have a letter to the secretary right now to find out what happened. So, but we at least have $167,000, and I don't know how it's split between which grant fund. I have no idea. I'm assuming there was 100 of grant applications. Just happened, and some of the smaller cities in State of Kansas were screaming that those of us that have a daily or more than once a week paper could have a hearing a little faster because of the notification. So, again, we have $167,000, and we'll find out why, and I'll let you know when I hear more, right? About the afternoon. We talked about a tough year, you know, I started the year at the hospital too, but I always said when I walked out of the hospital on the day without, I was going to run the 5K on 4th of July, and they'll send down salute, it's not going to happen nor the parade. There is going to be a J.C. Strong benefit, run 5K, 10K run on July 4th, working with Manhattan Rent Company, Terra Strode is leading this effort, and others, working with them to go ahead and put in place, if we need to have social distancing, all 500, 600, or 1,000 riders don't have to start at the same time. But they can start 50 at a time, they can start one at a time if they had to, but that'd be a little tough. But the point is, it'll happen and it'll be a good event, and I'll be there, and I always say I'll crawl if I have to, but I won't have to crawl, I can get through it. Also, again, grounds on the foothills board, Kristi Rodriguez has already hit the ground, she was part of a meeting last week. We are working with MAC to apply for funds for the OEA grant that I mentioned, like in 515 last week, to try to get funds to do Blue Jayways. So we'll have more talk about that next week. All I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stein?
I believe you heard enough for me tonight.
Appreciate that. Ms. Milton? Ms. Miller?
AMI project has moved along nicely. We're just about 10% complete on the project, and so far, everything's been going well, so good progress.
Mr. Rivera?
One thing, Mr. Mayor.
As you know, we have the CBDG grant funds for two, Wyden Spring Valley Road, and I would like the motorists to understand that there's barricades on there, and even though that we are not doing any work right now because we're waiting on the materials, there's been a delay, the contractor will start next Monday. So, pay attention to the barricades, understand, don't move them, go around the detour as it is posted, because if you don't, and they start work, and you happen to be in there, it could be a bad situation for you. So, understand, you know, for the little inconvenience that this will be, you're going to have a nice intersection roadway through there. So, understand, watch the, the signs, the work zone safety signs, and follow the detours. Thank you very much.
We're looking probably maybe up to four weeks.
Four weeks?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Mr. Luzier?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Mangold? Mr. Gurman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Lamb?
Couple months ago, when we were talking about pit bulls, to the chair, to Commissioner Brown, next commission meeting, I hope to have some numbers for you. Figuring we're about three months out, so it kind of gives a little snapshot of the reports of dog bites, so hopefully have that for you at the next commission meeting. The ACO is working on that. Also, just a reminder, at the next commission meeting, we're going to recognize, not only our, we tried to do this before COVID, but we have the three promotions, Captain Nichols, Lieutenant Kathy, and Sergeant Miles. And also, our employees of the quarter, they will be recognized as well. And also, two, three, well, one officer now works for another agency, but two officers who are being recognized for life saving. So, be prepared for that. So I will try to read as fast as I can, but to do it justice, it may take a little long, but I don't think we'll be this long, so. Questions, concerns? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Johnson?
Nothing.
Lou DeTrude?[1795.98]